Okay. Good afternoon. We welcome you here to the study meeting, the West Valley City Council, and call our meeting to order. We note that we have a forum present. We will excuse tonight Councilman Nordfeldt and Councilman Fitissimano. With that then, and people can also, in addition to attending here on purpose, we are holding these meetings here at the city offices, but they can also watch us online. Then our first item of business action to take is the approval of the minutes of July 6th. So I have a motion on the minutes in a second.
For approval?
Second.
Got that for us. Hearing no further comments, then without objection, the minutes will be approved. Okay, then our regular meeting, we will hold at 6:30. Any questions on the agenda? Any concerns before we get there?
Mayor, might be worthwhile to mention the one item wasn't a change, but for the public hearing.
They may ask for continuance on that item.
Oh, okay, yeah. You all heard that?
We've had some change in the officers of the company or corporation that are involved with this application.
So we'll see what happens if they request it, we'll be happy to do that. Okay, then our presentations in our study meeting will begin with a report from Karen Lang.
So I'm just giving you the worksheet this week, and then I'll actually give the report and take public comment during the regular meeting next week.
Okay, you don't want to talk about it and say how wonderful it is to all of us?
It's super wonderful.
It is somewhat self-explanatory.
It is, and you asked for a little bit more detail besides what's just at the bottom of that paper, so I'm getting that and I'll give you that next week as well. And mainly the tax increase, the only reason we give the report is because it's mandatory from the legislature starting about four years ago.
Yeah.
If we're going to increase, and the water district is planning a small tax increase, they could have gone higher, but we didn't really need the money right now. So they're allowed to go up to a point oh four, a triple up four, and we're only going to a three point eight six, I believe. And so, and then the uses are down there in the bottom. Mayor had a question about the new debt and bonds issued, so I'll get him more detailed on that one.
Yeah, and although it says here, it says purpose of the additional property tax revenue, and then it says which property tax helps support. So is this the amount generated from this tax increase? I take it it's not?
Not fully, no. No, the revenue and the rates and others help with that. So we have the wholesale rates we charge, we have a small wholesale population, and then, I mean, retail, and then we have a large wholesale population, and then the tax, or the taxes. So.
But as before, we don't have any action item on this.
No.
We just received the information.
Right, information and the public has time with a public hearing just to, or public comment period after, is all the legislature has asked for.
Kind of piggybacking on our meeting because we're meeting anyway.
Right.
Well, and there was a lot of discussion about that when they did this back, was it four years ago?
About that.
Yeah, it was. When you said that, that, I thought that sounded like the right timeframe.
Yeah.
So, yeah, if they can figure out a way to increase visibility, they'll probably do it. And that actually is a pretty good way because we reach a segment of the population that they probably wouldn't.
Correct, and on this handout, there will be some of these handouts next week for the public, and it does list on there the public hearing, which is August 11th at the district offices at 6 o'clock at night, and we move normally, meetings start at 3 for the district, but we have this one at 6, so it makes it easy for people to come after work and comment if they would like to at that meeting as well.
All right. If there's no further questions there, then on to our public hearings, application Z dash four 2021 filed by Greg Wilson for property at 1078 West Parkway Avenue. When we look at this next week, we'll deal with ordinance 21 dash 47. And so.
Mr. Pastoric, present.
Sorry, just getting all my tools set up here, and so Nicole, if you're able to promote me, I'll share my, share my screen here. All right, so this, this rezon application should look somewhat familiar to you. So last year, this, our portion of this property was rezoned to the Business Research Park Zone. So the property that's highlighted here in red is a total of 180 feet wide, and 143 feet of that property was rezoned to the Business Research Park Zone, and the request here is to add an additional 15 feet to the original 143, so to make 158 feet total. So I'll just go through these slides, you can see here a little bit closer. So again, this is the entire property. And just some images for reference, this is looking east on 2320 South. This is the home that's on the property to the east.
Steve?
Yes?
On your little red line, it goes through the middle or part of the roof there, will that house be taken out?
No, and I'll have a site plan here in a minute that shows how that, how that lines up.
Okay, thank you.
This is the property in question. This is looking more to the northwest, you can see the part of the Metro Business Park there to the west on the left-hand side of the image. This is the mosque on the south side of the street. This is looking west on 2320 South. So this is the building that's proposed, so it's a cabinet shop warehouse. Originally, the building was, at least the owner was contemplating a one-story building, this is actually two, or at least portions of the building are two stories. And that's part of the reason why they needed a little bit more space, and I'll explain that here in a minute. This next image just shows the side elevations of the building, and then some renderings of the building. So this is the concept plan that was submitted for the zone change, so the zone change last year, which was very, very basic, and at the time, they were anticipating a single-story building, but as they refined their plans, they decided to make the building larger with two stories, and this particular zone has a requirement that if you have a building that's over one story, you have to have a 100-foot setback next to residential. So that's what really drove the decision to add additional feet or additional area, so they could meet that setback requirement. So this is the latest site plan, and to your point, this shows there's still, from the property line to the house, there is still be 25 feet to the house, and then under this new concept plan, the two-story portion of the building would be 100 feet away from the residential property line. And so that, that summarizes this application, but just a quick recap again, it's for just an additional 15 feet to the Business Research Park Zone.
Okay, questions, comments? Hearing none. Okay, thank you. Let's see then. Next, we go to resolutions. Resolution 21 dash 124, for property deeds for property on Decker Lake Drive.
Thank you again, Mayor, and sorry Nicole, if you can promote me one more time. So I have just a map to show which property is involved here. All right, so this property is about a quarter of an acre, it's on the east side of Decker Lake Drive, just north of what we refer to as Lot D for the Maverick Center. The landowner here originally approached the city about purchasing the property, if there if the city had any interest in purchasing the property, and given the, the size and just the kind of irregular shape, we just were not really interested in a purchase. So then later, the owner approaches about, would the city be interested in a donation of the property? Well, with the price being right there, we said, well, we'll consider that. And so what, what this resolution would do with, or would do is authorize four deeds, because there are four different parties involved in the ownership of this property, that's the reason for the four. And the thought here would be potential uses could be possibly expanding to parking. We discussed potentially electric vehicle charging perhaps on this property, but no immediate plans for the use of the property, just simply donation, where the city does have a lease on the property to the south, so the city doesn't own the property to the south, but we have a lease with Rocky Mountain Power for parking to the south.
Okay, any questions or comments? Not hearing any. Boy, this is going quick. All right. Thank you. Next, we go to resolution 21 dash 125, to accept a grant from State of Utah for cost cross-town trail signage.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I am Jamie Young from Parks and Recreation, and we have received a grant through the governor's Economic Development Office to do some signage on the crosstown trail that will be directional and kind of show how it connects to some of the other trails. It's a $10,000 grant, and it is matching, and we, the match will be partly in kind and partly out of the park maintenance budget that we had budgeted for some signage anyway, so we're, we're asking for approval of the contract for the, for the grant, the $10,000 grant.
All right, Jamie, so with this grant and with our match, where does this leave us as far as the signage that we would like to do? Does this get it all done? Does it get us halfway there, 10%?
I mean, it gets most of on the crosstown trail. We have heard about the other trails that we want to add additional signage, but this gets most of it done on the crosstown trail, and how it connects with the Mountain View Corridor Trail and the Jordan River Trail.
Well, not hearing any other questions or comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
And so next, we'll go to resolution 21 dash 126 with Rolf Construction for the Stanton Drive Storm Drain Project.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. So we are here today to talk a little bit about our Stanton Storm Drain Project. I think most of you are a little bit aware of what we have going on out there, but we have a old corrugated metal pipe that runs in Stanton Drive just south of 3100 South and extends south from there for, for a decent distance. We need to get in there and replace that pipe before we have any type of significant failure in Stanton Drive, so that's the main priority of this project, but while we're there, we're also taking the opportunity to make some other much-needed storm drain improvements in that area. There's a subdivision a little bit further south, the Willow Cove subdivision that lacks adequate drainage facilities in that area, inlets and so forth. So while we're in the area, we're going to extend the storm drain a little further south to pick up some of that storm water, and we're also going to take the opportunity to get some of the, the storm drain facilities out of private property while we're there and get them out into the roadway, which will not only allow easier maintenance, but will also enable us to get further south like previously discussed. So we had our bid opening for this project last week, we received five bids last week. The lowest responsible bidder was Rolf Construction, and so it is our recommendation that we move forward and award a construction contract to Rolf Construction in the amount of around 688,000, just under 700,000, and to authorize the Public Works Department to spend not more than 760,000 for the completion of this project. Yes, it is.
No more utopia equipment floating out of the box. Yeah.
Is Rolf Construction one we've used a lot of, or?
So the city itself has not used Rolf quite a bit, but Granger Hunter uses them extensively, so they have done a lot of work inside of West Valley City, but they have never done it under our contract.
Okay. Not hearing any further comments. Thank you very much. Let's see, then our consent agenda, resolution 21 dash 129. This is for at 5281 West Postwood Circle, this is part of that 4700 South project, so real estate purchase agreement, perpetual easement, temporary construction easement, Braden Twitchell. So we'll keep seeing these for a while, I guess. Any questions on those? Okay, then we'll go to our communications, help the West Valley, a follow-up discussion.
So Mayor, I'll just maybe just make an introductory comment, which is the staff doesn't have any further information or presentation, we're just bringing this back as the council had requested it. Now, given the fact that Jake's not here tonight, I don't know how you all want to handle it, but that's.
I have a feeling that Jake would love to be involved in this discussion. And it would take a lot to keep him away, but he's a busy guy, so unless you have items you want to discuss, we'll just reschedule this till.
I just have one note that I don't want to forget.
Okay.
So on the membership criteria, it doesn't say anywhere there that it needs to be residence only or a certain percentage of residents, and I know how our sister city kind of got out of hand, and I just didn't know if we needed to make that adjustment.
I'm not sure if that was just left out of this by, because we, we just didn't put it in, or if we haven't defined it, but I'll go back and check that out, just to make sure, because you're right, I know that that's the council's preference, that we either have it completely or heavily weighted to citizens.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Okay. At 10. Council calendar. There are actually now items that you can attend and go and participate in, so. No questions and potential future agenda items?
I have a couple, Mayor.
Sure.
One is, a month to six weeks or so ago, we had some people here complaining about skunks. Got another report about skunks in a different area. You sent out some information about what it would cost to help address the problem, and so I think we need to have a discussion if we're interested in putting funds into that or what we're going to do.
If I could just recap the information I sent out, if everybody did read it, so we looked into the two alternatives, right, the county slash state discussion that we'd even had a little bit of last year, then also this private contractor concept, which is also available. I didn't recommend the county one because, given the number of calls that we normally have, this was going to equal something like $2,000 to $3,000 per call, which seemed a little ridiculous, frankly.
If we had it so they had to come out and get 30,000, it'd be worth it, but
Right.
It's the number, we just don't have that, those numbers.
Exactly, that was based on this average of 15 calls for skunks a year we have. Now, the other part of that is also not really sure that we want to be advertising and encouraging that we'll do that either, so it's not like we really want to fill the $30,000 worth of that. So, given that, what I recommended was these private contractors will come out at, I can't remember the numbers now, but I think it was like $200 or $150 for a trap, and then $200 to actually remove the animal.
Oh, so these guys are paying $100 an animal to remove?
And I could be wrong on the numbers, but that might have just been an example, but my thinking was that even at that, even if you had multiple animals in a single situation, you're still going to be far under the 30,000 at that, at that number of calls, and even if we get an increase in that, so to speak, over the years, then we could always switch to the county contract if it made sense. So the only downside of either one of these options is Lane and I talked, is Lane here?
I can, he's on Zoom.
Okay, yeah, I just wanted to make sure he was there. As Lane and I talked, the, one of the problems we foresee here, not a big problem, but just wanted to think about, is that a lot of times these folks call, and they don't think we're euthanizing the skunk, and in both of these situations, the skunk's getting euthanized right there on the scene. Sometimes that results in them then saying, yeah, no, I don't want you to come out and kill the skunk, or other times they still want you to come out. And then the only other consideration is the county does it by this pole and syringe arrangement, it's very high-tech, just kidding. Not, no net.
No, no.
Just right there into the cage, right, and then the other method which the private contractors use is usually a pellet gun, either of which is probably disturbing to some folks' sensitivities out there. So, again, just from a presenting the information standpoint, that's kind of what we have. So from a policy standpoint, it's really not going to cost that much money to do it, it really is just a matter of do you as a council want us to do it?
So if we did it, would it be something where if they call animal control, animal control calls the contractor?
Yes.
We wouldn't be giving the contractor's number, we'd be the intermediary.
Yeah.
Under the state statute, are, are skunks vermin, where we can just kill them like mice and rats?
And, Lane, you probably know better than I do on that question.
Yeah, they're considered wildlife, but they're pests, and so you can, you can euthanize them any way you want.
And would, and I'm just anticipating we start doing skunks, we're going to be looking at raccoons?
Yeah.
Are they also vermin?
They are. The, the only state law says that you can't transport or relocate them. If you're gonna, if you're going to kill them, you gotta do it humanely, but you can do that.
And there is a dead raccoon right now in front of the Montessori school on the pavement, which we've had experience with raccoons, so that's the only good raccoon. When it's in the city, in the wild, I couldn't care less, but in the city, so I would offer skunks and raccoons and.
And then what's next? I mean, I don't think we have armadillos.
We, we have had requests for, what was the list again, Lane? Mice, rabbits?
Rabbits, jackrabbits.
Moles, pigeons, moles, voles, pigeons, rabbits. It, it, certain birds, besides pigeons, but yeah, the, the list can grow pretty quick on, on, on non-domesticated animals that people would like somebody else to deal with. Bees' nests, insects are also end up being an issue.
Yeah, I just think because these two carry rabies are a little bit more dangerous. I haven't really been attacked by a kitten though.
And we could say, we could expand our services to include just skunks and raccoons.
You want to do both?
Pardon?
You want to do both?
I would think so. We have an issue with both.
But I do not think you should expand it beyond that.
No, and I would clarify that just because they carry diseases that are, I mean, maybe the others do, but.
Well, I mean, that, that argument can get extended too.
Yeah, that's true.
But we don't get that many calls if you just include the two numbers. I think between all of the lists there that Lane went over, we had something like 43 calls last year, is that right, Lane?
Right, 40, we had 15 raccoon, or 15 skunk calls, and then 43 that just encompassed everything from raccoons to, to pigeons and everything in between.
Do we go out on rats and mice?
We do not.
Okay, because you can, I mean, trap them and throw them in the garbage. And the recyclables.
The reality of, when you look at the raccoons and the skunks, the skunk's impact is, covers a much greater area. I know in my area why we've, I don't know where they're at, they're not around my house, thank goodness, but I can tell they're there for some reason. And I even have allergies, so.
Well, I'd be okay limiting it to skunks too. I'm just trying to think, well, where, where do we draw the line?
Those two seem to be the two predators of chickens, which we allow in the city, so.
Well.
And I don't know if they're only really next to open fields, I mean, the, what the complaints we're getting right now with that neighborhood is right next to the golf course, so I don't know if they're coming out of the shrubs of the golf course and then going back, or what their protection is. I know we used to have raccoons at our house, and we had the open ditch across the street, but since it's been covered, nobody's had a problem with them, so.
I think we'd have to inform if, if, you know, somebody calls and says, hey, I've got a skunk problem, and animal control says, okay, we're going to call it, we have a contract out for this, and I guess they'll get in touch with you, or they'll show up or whatever, at some point before the pellet gun comes out, they need to know that it's going to be killed on your property.
Yeah.
They remove it alive.
Take your kids inside.
No, they can't remove it alive. Think about it. But to the point, which is a good point.
Yeah.
Lane and I actually talked about that too, and that's actually another reason we prefer the private contractor, because Lane says they've actually been pretty good about getting with the, the property owner and saying, okay, now you understand this is what's going to happen, and you might not want the kids around, and you know, that sort of thing.
Yeah. Someone, someone's going to feel bad that we're killing skunks.
Oh, for sure, yep.
Yeah.
And that we can't relocate, and why don't we take them out to the woods?
Yeah.
Why don't we take them to Harriman?
That's the first question we get.
Or Idaho.
Yeah, there you go.
There might be one that went to Idaho the last month.
Every month, you can drive a truck of skunks up to Idaho.
Now, this does not require an ordinance.
No, I mean, within budget, Lane and I talked about, let's just see how many calls we get. If we need more money, we could come back and ask for it, maybe get a program mod in the next budget year if it became that big of a thing, but I think we, at least initially, if the council would like us to do that, we'll just go forward and do it.
And if we're not going to advertise it broadly, which I'm okay not doing, I think we at least ought to let those who have contacted us know that that's available.
Contacted us recently.
Yeah, so can I let that neighborhood know?
Yep, we can do all that. So Lane, you got that, right?
Well.
Yes.
And you know who the people are?
Don?
I think, I think we have the, that information.
Okay.
The council members, Don and Tom. Yes. You okay with that?
Yes, I'm okay with that. I'm assuming, yes.
It, it sounds the best way to me. Okay.
The other thing I was going to bring up, I was at the UCCC last night and joined the concert. And noticed again, I hadn't been there for a while, but that Chinese gate needs refurbishing, needs to be painted. I don't know if we have any plans for that or we have to hire special people from China to not ruin their chi or.
Yeah, I know, I'm, well, I shouldn't say I know. I don't think we have to worry about issues like that, although, like I said, I'm not sure. I'd have to check that out. But I do know it will be expensive because that is a very specialized and intricate design work. So we talked about doing that before Paul had left, so that has kind of transferred to Nancy's realm.
Councilman Giller?
Oh, yes.
I, I've met with Nancy and she's aware of it and they're trying to get some estimates and costs and that. They're also trying to contact Terry Chen to see what his availability of contact is so that he can see if, because he's been pushing. Getting it refurbished also.
Okay, how long have we had that now, Don? I should know this off the top of my head, but I don't remember.
Hmm, at least ten years.
I was going to say ten.
More than that.
So it's got a approximate lifespan of ten years on the paint.
Here before you were on council, so it's been sometime in ten, eleven years.
Yeah, that sounds about right.
Yeah, I think it's between ten and twelve years.
Okay.
Time flies when you're having fun.
For sure.
Yeah.
You get a Chinese gate and ten years later you need another one.
I know.
But Nancy is, is working on that and trying to get ahold of Terry and see what we can do.
Okay, thanks for the information, Don.
She's also seeing if maybe Terry has some financial contacts too.
Well, then shut everybody up. So.
Hopefully so.
Yes. Okay, here I have a potential future agenda items here. Last year I brought up about Chesterfield Loud Music and I think there's no progress there. And so I just want to bring it up again and hopefully we can solve the problem this time. We need our police officers there to support us and look like we still are in a dilemma.
Tom?
Yep.
Do you know if people are calling in those complaints?
Uh, yeah.
They are calling in?
Yeah, they're calling in and they call me, they call everywhere.
Well, are they calling the city? Because I had a neighbor that called in a complaint and it was dealt with that night. And so that's what I was just making sure that they're actually calling the right.
They called, they called the nine-one-one and the nine-one-one gave to, gave them another number and they called that number. And so, yeah, it's kind of frustrating.
You know, I know it is frustrating for Councilman Hune and the, and the neighborhood out there. But the progress I have to report is the officers are responding. And they also are operating under a, there is a no, no tolerance. They're not like going out and warning people. They will ticket and or act in other ways as appropriate, given the situation. So I don't, I'm, I'm open to more ideas that we can do with them.
I contacted Officer Matt Rose and emailed him something, what I heard from the Chesterfield. Hopefully we can work together, but I, I need you guys to help us out in this particular area. So I want to bring it up for next time, potential future agenda there. And if we can do something about it, we can have owners or we can. It, I, I personally think they know, they, they stop in or loud music they have there. When police at, at their place, you know, at the present. But when the police left, they, they gone and then they came back and they had a music again. And that's a cause of problem. It's hard for police to track down like that because they have other things to do in the city. So we have a very strict or maybe strong or something kind of punishment, something is a very steep ticket, fire or something. I think we can, they know they, they, they intensely to do that. And so I think is that's not fair to other people.
So just to be clear, Tom, your solution then would be to increase the punishment?
Yeah, I, I, I want to kind of strong or very, very stiff fire ticket to those people because they intensely to do that.
Well, let me go, let me go back and find out what the fine structure is for the particular offense and see if there is anything we can do about that.
Well, I appreciate that. You know, if they accidentally, they do something wrong and they didn't know that, that's fine. They, they, they saw police came, they stopped and they wait for police lap and they came back again, and that's not right.
Yeah.
That's not fair for other, other people live there and they follow the rule and live by the law, you know what I'm saying?
Yep.
Yeah, thank you.
Any other potential?
I was just going to ask if we could have a discussion on the senior living applications. If we could maybe look at, after that last application and was going to have entries on a smaller street. We specifically said that they had to have access to an eighty-foot right of way. And so I didn't know if we wanted to put that into the ordinance that the only entries could be off the eighty-foot roads. And so I didn't know if the, we just needed to have a communication item, see if there was any interest in that or not.
Yeah, I'd like to take a look at that together with other potential locations. Because I think if, you know, when we say you have to be on a big road, it's like, okay, but we're going to access it from somewhere else.
Yeah.
Probably not what we were thinking.
Not our intent.
Okay, so eighty-foot access, other locations that might be, or maybe a list of potential sites now?
And they sent us the potential, or the map with all the potentials.
Right.
About a month and a half ago.
Right, right. So maybe this limits it or?
If we see it again, it'd be easy send, I'll keep it sorted myself.
Well, as I've looked around, you know, and I've been a proponent of this. But I think that we're getting awfully close to enough.
Or maybe we want to say that too.
Yeah, for me, just speaking for me, I have my, I think there's one more possibility and that's it for me. The rest I want to see either, what's the name of the energy efficient subdivisions?
RS.
RS. I'm okay doing some of those or just stay with RE residential estates. I don't know what our need is, but I know that there's also a need for those larger homes as well.
So we got three, Tom, Don, anybody else want to speak up?
The end of mine.
No, I meant as far as bringing it back.
I can get you another one.
And Wayne, they're saying he doesn't want to bring it back unless we have more than three people.
Oh, sorry.
I'll say yes, let's bring it back.
Okay, all right. We'll, we'll take a look into that. Seems like a pretty simple examination. We can do that.
Steve's probably got it in his head right now.
Probably does.
Okay, if there are no more, council reports.
Mayor?
Oh, Don.
Last Saturday was the first concert at USANA also. And Councilman Giller and I were both there. And as we looked, as I looked around at least, USANA was very full. And I was gratified to see that they were back in, in harness and, and moving along. And so I, I think it's something, you know, we do support it and that. And I think their list of concerts is not always my choice of music. But I've got grandkids that somehow like that kind of music. So I think they're doing a great job and they're getting the crowds out and that's what the important thing is. Thank you.
Okay. There is not a need for a closed session, so we will not have one, so.
Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn, then without objection, we will be adjourned. Hearing no objections, that's unanimous, we're adjourned. My goodness, that was a short one.